To call the Town of Wambsure Planning Board Meeting to order, we all rise for a pledge to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. All right. We have the secretary perform a roll call attendance, please.
Mr. Trump?
Here.
Mr. Boerse?
Here.
Ms. Dina?
Here.
Mr. Prino?
Here.
Mr. Darity?
Here.
Mr. Vaughn?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Clark?
Here. Okay. All the board minutes, all the board members should have received the minutes from the April 1st meeting. Is there any discussion regarding the minutes? If not, entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Okay. The first item on the agenda this evening is an adjourned public hearing for DC Sports renovation. Entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll move that.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Are there any comments on the public? Or I guess you run the meeting, right?
I'm sorry. Okay. So, I guess the last time, I guess the last time you were here in front of us, we had, you had to go in front of the zoning board of appeals-
Yes.
-for the front yard setback variance, which apparently was granted.
Yep. Got a public hearing there and that was granted.
Yeah. So they, that was, you know, so they granted the variance and sent over a recommendation to the board, which we will discuss in a minute. I do want to bring up about the other issue with the lighting. The lighting, we did go out to the site after the last meeting on, on the first, walked around, the lighting heads were all turned down and the lighting is basically at acceptable levels at the perimeter of the property. And there's really, you know, it's, it's not over, it's not overly glaring anywhere. So, we're okay there. So, that's pretty much where we are from the last meeting. I guess there was no, no changes to, to the plan?
No changes, no.
Okay. So, we're still good there. So, let's discuss the, let's discuss the memo from the zoning board. So, the first item was they, the zoning board recommended the planting of three or four non-mature trees at the front of the property across Route 9. Get a feeling from the board on where we want to go with this.
I don't think I'm necessary myself.
Okay.
It's the opposite of what you want to do there.
All right.
You want to see it.
Yeah, we agree.
Right. And there's already existing, there's already existing landscape there-
Yes.
-prior, so that's still, there's still landscaping. It's not like we're taking anything away.
No.
Okay. All right. So, I'll put it up to a board for a vote. Somebody wants to, if you guys agree that we don't want to do this, then somebody entertain a motion to, to not plant the three or four trees as recommended.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See, none, motion carries. Okay. And then, just add a clarification. Item number two regarding a hold harmless agreement, I defer this to the attorney. I don't think that this is something that we usually get involved with.
No.
So, okay, so there's nothing to, no action needs to be taken there. All right. So, that resolves the zoning issues. All right. So, with that, this isn't adjourned public hearing. I'll just open up the floor for a moment. Is there anybody here that wishes to, to talk on behalf of this application? There's any questions, concerns? Okay, seeing none.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion carries. All right.
We need a motion to draft-
Need to draft the resolution.
I'll make a motion to draft our resolution for that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? See, none, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
So-
Two weeks?
It'll be for the, it'll be for the next meeting, which is June the 6th. Oh, sorry. May the 6th, sorry.
I got to ask something, so I can't do it tonight, just kidding. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, all right. Now, have a good evening. Okay. Okay. Our next item on the agenda this evening is Subin LLC subdivision. This is an adjourned public hearing, so entertain a motion to, well, actually, before we, oh, yeah, entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All right. Motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, with this application, just so the public's aware, the applicant has decided to adjourn this to May the 6th, since we're waiting on a couple of other agencies to respond. I don't know if there's anybody here from the public that wants to speak on behalf of this application. Okay? If you step up to the microphone, please.
I'd like to know-
If you, let, talk it to the microphone so that-
I need to know what is going to be the elevation to Widmer Road. Because they are putting the driveways, and if that, if their houses are higher than Widmer, they're going to flood my cars. Because they are just across there. And the other thing that I would like to know, we are informed that they have a path that goes, look, I've always understood New Hackensack, we are going to discharge. And the other question is, we are, they need to put certain things. Those fields, we are going to go, are going to be widemer.
Okay.
And if you go through, because I was driving to New Hackensack last Monday, and you see all the water to New Hackensack. So, they are going to go all the way to-
Through New Hackensack Road. Right. Where it currently goes now.
And I'm afraid of them flooding my cars. That is my concern.
Okay. Well, we'll, all right. So, we'll have that addressed. And the public hearing's being adjourned anyway to May the 6th-
We said it.
-at this point, and we will get, and we will have, and we'll have that addressed at that point in time.
Yes. And this, this, they making like a channel that goes from Widmer to, to the part where in the park, and we're going to clean that park.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll have, we'll have those, we'll have those items, we'll, we'll get those questions, relay it to the, to the applicant's engineer. And so, they'll have, they'll, hopefully, they'll have a response to that at the next meeting.
You know, what I concern, not only for the rain, you know, when the snowman, the water is going to come on to us.
Okay.
And the drainage is at the bottom, close to, to New Hackensack.
Is that a county road or a town?
No, it's town.
It's a town road.
County?
It's a town road.
The New Hackensack Road is a county road.
They're the ones who would have to keep that drain clear, right?
It's county, a little bit town.
Well, Widmer-
New Hackensack is the county road, but the, I think what she's talking about is Widmer, which is a town road.
Yeah, Widmer to the town road, yes.
It's a town, it's a town road.
Okay. We will, we will get those, we'll get those items addressed.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else that wishes to make a comment regarding this application? All right. With that, entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing to May the 6th.
So move.
Second.
Okay. Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. So, as per the earlier discussion, there was a potential conflict that has arisen with the, with the engineer. Entertain a motion to approve John Andrews to review this application-
I'll make that-
-going forward. Okay?
Second.
Okay. So, motion has been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? See, none, motion carries. Okay.
I'll reach out to him tomorrow morning, Bruce.
All right. Thank you. All right. And then, we'll see if we can, you know, get, actually, B, if you can possibly, B, if you let Mike Bodendorf know that there were some questions answered, or asked at the meeting, if he can possibly address that for the next meeting. All right. Thank you. All right. All right. On to the next one, is a discussion regarding Jackson Photovoltaic Ground Mounted Solar.
So, we just received the corrections on Thursday and Friday you guys wanted, so we don't have them ready for you right now.
All right. State your, state your name and-
Oh, my name is Jan Burgess. I'm from Infinity Solar Systems, representing Darren Jackson at 25 Dugan Lane, Hopeful Junction.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, obviously, you've received the, the comments from both the planner and the engineer. Okay.
This past Thursday and Friday, so we didn't have enough time to respond to them.
Yeah.
So, we called in, we'll just need some more time. And as I was sitting in earlier during about the other violations, we didn't know. So, we'll obviously address that as well. And the screening too for the, for the ground mount as well, we'll address also. We just didn't know what was required in here.
Sure. The, the provisions of the code that you may want to take a look at, I mean, I spell everything out in the memo, but I also make reference to the sections of the code, if you want to take a look at those as well.
Thank you.
No problem.
All right. So, obviously, you'll, so I guess you're, we are working on all the items-
Yeah, getting them, getting them addressed. Yeah. Exactly. Getting the footprint, we actually requested the property survey, and there seems to be a little bit of discrepancy too, if it's 21 or 25, so we're all in the process of figuring that part out of it, so.
Okay. All right. So, I mean, really, unless you have anything for the board tonight-
No, I didn't. I called in earlier today as well, and I said, hey, we're not going to be ready to answer these questions, and they said to come forward anyway, so here I am tonight. And I'd like to let you guys know that we just need some time to make the corrections and to talk to Mr. Jackson, see if he can resolve the issues that Mrs. Judith mentioned earlier.
Okay. The one thing that we discussed in the pre-meeting, you may or may not have caught, it is not reflected in my memo, but if you can replace the short EAF with a, a long form EAF-
Yeah, we provided that. There was a 43-page application off the website, right? We provided that initially, and then we were called back and told us that the form was not legible, but it was the form the town, it was the form the town provided. So, if you need a new one made, I'd be happy to make one, but we're running out of time in this application.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, all right. So, that we'll take care of. Any of the board members have any questions for the applicant while he's here?
Just more information on that, a little specific to the application, but seems like a very large solar array, given it's a single-family house.
Large in what terms? In terms of actual size and kilowatts? I, I can see where that comes from, but the New York Unified Solar Permit Application recognizes solar systems under 25 to be what they call small-scale residential.
I understand that.
So, no, I'm just saying that 16 is not really that far off for a requirement of a property with usage that size. So, if this was five or six years ago, it would be an 80-panel system, not a 40-panel system. So, everything is progressing forward.
All right. Well, thank you.
I got a question. How come ground mounted, not roof?
Oh, because he has a lot of trees on his property, and that would actually get in the way of the sun's path of travel over his home. So, the best case for his usage would be in the spot there, or a different spot in the yard where it's more open.
That's a single-family home, right?
Single-family.
But it's a- Do you do the power bank or anything?
Oh, no, no battery included in this one. It's just straight usage, 105% rule, that's all.
It's going to the left of the home?
If you're standing like in the driveway looking at the house?
If I'm standing there looking at the driveway, the home is going to be up towards my left. It's going to be like around 11 o'clock. So, it'll be screened, like I said before earlier, it'll be screened by the home from street view if you're traveling across, and also by the tree that's located in the center of the driveways, kind of like an island strip almost. So, that screens it naturally from view there. The neighbors will see it, but I don't think it'll be of profound impact.
That's what I was looking for. There's a neighbor like right across from there.
Yeah, there's, there's that driveway, there's that little grass easy, and then there's the neighbor there.
That's the one-
Directly from the left side of the house.
There's also the neighbor behind, right? There's the, there's residential property on the, the left, right, and behind this-
I'll have to go back and take a look at the picture. I'm pretty sure that that view is going to be obstructed through the tree line back there.
It looks like, it looks like it's pretty circled on all sides by trees, but that there are residential properties on all three sides.
When we get better plans on this, maybe we go out and take a look at it.
Okay.
Yeah. Or at any point, if you guys want to, before we even go any further, we could also, we could schedule a field trip if you guys really want to look at the property.
Yeah, probably.
Because it doesn't matter, at this point, at least you can, actually, probably within a few weeks, we'll probably know exactly where the screening will be, because all leaves will be back out.
Yeah. Might be good to see it before the leaves come in, if you can catch it.
So, if you want to do it, if you want to do it sooner than later, at least you'll know where the gaps are.
Yeah.
You know, over the winter months. So, I'll leave it up to everybody else if you want to set a date for a, for a field trip.
Friday or Saturday morning, we got that town cleanup thing. Maybe, I don't know, 4:30 Friday or something, or 4 o'clock Friday?
I don't know. Does that work for?
I won't be able to make it, but I'll be shot this week. I'm pretty shot this week.
Yeah. So. What's everybody else for? So, you're, you're saying this, the 19th?
Yeah.
I'm just throwing it out there.
All right.
What do you think?
19, that's Friday?
Right.
I might be out of town.
What?
That might not work for me.
Saturday?
Saturday? Who's good for Saturday?
I can't do it this weekend.
No?
Friday I can do it, not this weekend.
Maybe later in the day Friday.
Okay.
I, I don't think I could do 4 o'clock Friday. Maybe like 6.
Do you do what? Do you do?
6.
6 on?
Friday.
On Friday?
Maybe.
Any other suggestions?
Monday is a-
I don't know my schedule, it's a problem, the schedule changes constantly. I can do Monday. But I can't do after like 5:30. Or I can do it earlier.
So-
I can't do it Monday.
Can't do it Monday, okay.
I can't do Monday either. Monday or Tuesday.
Okay. About-
Tuesday.
Yeah, Tuesday at 23rd.
You good?
Leaves are going to be in by then.
Huh?
Leaves are going to be in by then?
Yeah.
I'm not good on that time.
Huh?
I'd be out of town.
You'll be out of town 23rd?
We'll be like a couple of us anyway, right?
Yeah. What about everybody else for the 23rd?
Okay.
I can't do the 22nd or the 23rd. I can do the 24th.
The 24th?
What time?
What time on the 24th?
Anytime in the afternoon or later.
I'm wide open on the 24th.
You guys are busy guys, you know?
Yeah, that's the problem. Monday's going around.
24th is that meeting Wednesday? 24th is that?
That's earlier in the day, that's at 2:30. So-
6 o'clock Wednesday.
Perfect. Great.
Okay, what time?
6?
What is it? 6 Wednesday? No, Wednesday we have a meeting. That's the last Wednesday.
Yeah, I don't know. I'd have to do earlier though. On that day, I'd have to do like 5.
I can do it.
I could do 5.
I could do 5.
You do 5?
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, 5 o'clock?
The 24th at 5 o'clock?
Yeah.
Works for me.
Okay.
I second that.
I second that.
Okay. All right. So, we're gonna, we're gonna go out, the board will go out there at 5 o'clock on April 24th, go take a look around the site, and-
25 Dugan Lane.
Yep. And we will, we will let you know if, unless you decide to be there, but if there's anything-
Do you guys like to be there?
If you be there, it'd be that much easier for us, we can discuss the issue, you know, just the screening issues, and in that way, you can go ahead and update your plan and-
Let me just check my schedules.
Mr. Jim, we need permission. No, no, don't even start.
Oh, yeah, we do need, yeah. So, I'm assuming that the owner, just please confirm with the owner that we have permission to go on the property to-
Oh, yeah, of course, yes.
Yeah. So, just confirm, if you could do us a favor and just email the secretary that they're aware of the, the date.
I'll attach her onto the communication with him that we're talking about having a site visit.
To have the site visit on the 24th. Okay. So, motion was made, seconded, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? None, so motion carries. All right. So, we'll go out there, and then the interim, I guess she'll be working towards-
Getting the corrections back from the engine.
The next submission.
I made the motion.
I don't trust me to motion, I don't think anybody's-
Who's second?
Who's second? Yeah, well, I knew I heard somebody second it. Yeah. Okay.
All right, thanks, I'll be home safe.
Okay.
Do you need a copy of the violation for your claim?
Um, it's, I'll, I'll have him reach out, only because I want to handle some kind of sensitive outside.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a good night.
Okay. All right. Okay. On to the next item this evening. We have a conceptual, a conceptual review regarding Al's auto repair amended site plan.
I'm Rob Gargano, it's my father, Al Gargano. I think you were supposed to get the, Drew, where you, did you get the site plan?
Yes.
They have, okay, so in the area where the truck rental is on the site plan there, we're just looking to change from doing truck rentals there to have a tow guy use the property there.
To have, sorry, say that again?
To have a tow truck company work out of there rather than the, the truck rentals.
So, are there any site changes, changes proposed at all?
Okay. Because I was just, yeah, I kind of looked at it. So, this is an old, obviously, this is an old site plan from 1997. And just, just to confuse me a little bit, because it does say, the proposed office area, I guess that is there currently?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. And that, is that the area, which area are we talking about for?
It says it on there, proposed for rental, for truck rental. Item 4. Okay.
Oh, that's back like in the trees there, right?
Yeah. So, aren't you-
Unfortunately, the property, it all went to the back, yep.
So, you're talking about back in here? Right. Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And this is going to be used for the-
He's gonna just park his trucks there, and he wants to have an impound lot there for vehicles, no more vehicles than what it's already given for us to have there, I think it was like nine vehicles or something like that, so.
Okay. So, he's, and so they're proposing to fence it in?
I think he has to do that, because if you want the-
If he has to provide like a secure impound for different things, right? He has to have a-
You're still gonna do like a 15 by 30 fence.
Okay, 15.
What company owns it?
I guess, it's on him, I mean, that's a design he wants to do, so I'm just putting it before you guys, see if you can do it.
Okay.
What company?
Company is Superior Towing.
Okay.
Rob?
Yes. We're okay.
Yeah.
I'm all good with this, sorry. I'm willing to do it.
Okay. All right. All right. Is, just a question. Really, I look at this, and I know, I know everybody else has looked at it, but out of curiosity, do you know where, oh, okay. I see it. There's the septic tank in your septic field is right there, close to the building?
Yeah.
Okay, so you wouldn't, you're not going to interfere with any of that?
No, we're not touching any of that stuff.
Okay.
Really, the only change would be is if he's going to put the fence up.
He's going to put a fence in and...
For the impound, yeah. That would be the only change.
Okay. What type of fence are we talking about, like chain link?
I think they require a chain link fence that has to be covered, so it would be a covered chain link fence there.
Okay.
So you wouldn't be able to see in there, you won't be looking into it.
There are trees all around that end.
Yeah, it's pretty far in the back of the property there.
Where were the tow trucks and the enter going in and out, is that on the...
The gravel rug right there?
Oh, he's going to use the...
On drive.
Yeah, the, yeah, yeah, it would be our driveway. They have two accesses, one on each side, I think it's the, what is that?
The one.
Not 93, it's the other one. Old road.
That's a cross room.
Cable vision? Yeah, exactly.
What are they usually use, like two tow trucks on site and one?
Yeah, I believe he has two tow trucks, yes.
24-hour operation?
Yeah.
There's no residential?
I went and looked at it today.
All right.
I don't really have any questions. That's all they're doing?
No?
Yeah.
They've been driving around for a while, always seems to be very nice, you know, for a garage.
Thanks, we try, we try to keep very...
Yeah, it's usually very clean, there's junk cars all over the place, so.
All right, went by today.
So the... All right, so... Well, a question comes in, is this going to, I know...
Are they going to drive on the septic?
How do you talk to, huh?
Are they going to drive on the septic?
No, no, that's a non-issue, it looks like that's kind of, that's kind of confined off to the side there. Is whether or not this needs a full approval? No, it's just, so I didn't talk to Barbara about this one. Judy, did you speak to Barbara at all regarding this?
I did.
Was this application to go for a full approval or is this just basically based upon an architectural review?
I think we need a full approval.
You do need a full approval, okay.
This is not typically the use, and I know there were some conversations about it's not going to be a tow truck facility, he's going to have tow trucks there, but damaged vehicles would be stored in the building.
Yeah, I mean, if something is not looking well, we can bring it inside the vehicle. We'll address it as it comes, obviously we don't want the place to look, you know, shabby. We're trying to keep it...
They're also back there for 20 something years.
Yeah, I mean, we had large trucks back there.
The trucks are still there?
No, no, they're not there anymore.
I heard they started, companies started getting in trouble. They weren't paying me.
So there was a previous special permit for the site?
Yes, exactly.
Now there will be a new operator, new owner and a new operator there, they will then need their own special.
Correct, yeah, so I just, so, yeah, so basically tonight was just basically feeling out the board for, you know, whether or not...
Yeah, so what's going to be entailed? Is it worth it for me to go forward with this or...
Yeah, so I think, I think, I mean, obviously it sounds like you're on the right track with the, you know, with the screening. I mean, the use itself will be allowed as long as it's managed.
Right.
Because the site, because then what happens is the site plan will be amended. I'm assuming there is a current site plan for this?
There is a site plan, but this use is not on it and the storage of the rental trucks has been out of service for over a year, I believe, longer. So that typically you've lost that use, so you would need a special use permit for the use of the tow truck.
Yeah. What I would like to talk to Barbara about and what I'd like to talk to Kyle about and do some reading on is that the site is not undersized by the zone, but for that special permit, there's a two-acre minimum and it looks like they got a variance for it in 97.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they will need another variance or if that will run with.
That will, so Barbara and I did speak and she said she, because I called out the two-acre, she said they've already established, so we wouldn't have to recreate that.
So that'll run with, okay. Then it would just be a new special permit and minor changes, amended site plan, minor changes to the site plan.
Okay.
But I think that they would need approvals as opposed to just architectural approval.
I have a question.
Sure.
You said the only physical change to the site is really going to be the installation of the fence?
Yes.
So the gravel's there, everything's there?
Everything's there.
Okay.
Oh, so they're not changing, you're not changing the building, that's just...
Exactly, the tow trucks have been the...
Yeah, you're putting up a fence and you'd be getting a new special permit.
It's a minimal, yeah, I mean, it's minimal, but it's putting it to the point where now I understand where they need to come in. It's basically, it's amending the previous site plan to some degree, but it's the special permit that needs to be applied for.
I have a question, maybe it's, you know, since some of these cars that come in, maybe damaged cars?
I'm sure it will be.
And then the issue about drainage?
They're the poker card.
Yeah, so the issue is about drainage and what?
Well, yeah, that was actually the question that I had. I don't think it's so much an issue of drainage as a potential contamination, right? That's what I think you're...
That's right, yeah.
So I think what these guys are saying is if they have something that's a concern, they'll bring it in the building.
Yeah, we'll address it as it comes, we don't want to contaminate the property and make it worthless than it is, you know, so, yeah, of course we'll be...
Usually everything leaks out by the time it gets there anyway, if it is needed.
I don't want to sell the place, I don't need to deal with it over.
Yeah, contamination of the property, yeah, definitely don't want that happening, so...
You could make that a condition of the special use permit. I would think so, that any damaged vehicle that's, you know, exhibiting leakage of oil or any liquids be stored in the building.
That was part of the special, that was part of the original, of what you could store and what could to prevent any leakage there were.
Right, and once it's addressed, we can put it back outside with the issue, yeah, that's, we would do that in the line.
Yeah. Those are the best kinds of conditions?
Yeah.
The ones that you're going to do anyway?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so is there any other issue, any other things you want to bring to the applicant's attention? To address per, I guess it's going to need to be a full submission to us, so...
I actually have one other question, just completely out of just curiosity, just because we've done some work in that area. You guys are still on well, right? Well water?
Yes.
Is your well shown on here?
Yeah, it's out on the, I saw it earlier, it's on the, what is it, here?
It's in the parking lot. Yeah.
Yeah, it's out.
It's a dry well, that's...
To the, to the left of the...
Oh, there you go, I got, yep, yep. Okay.
Yep.
So they're not going to want to contaminate the soil next to their well?
No, obviously not.
That is an eight-foot fence, right? Or six?
Yeah, I believe it has to be an eight-foot fence.
Yeah, usually it does disrate.
I believe it has to be.
I got a good day to pull around.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a semi.
Is that shed yours or the property next door's on?
That's ours, yeah.
Okay, so...
The empty, I haven't used for a while.
We'll address that.
Yeah. If he wants to stay inside the shed anyway, in the property, he's not going to be...
Okay. All right, any other questions? Okay, all right, so I guess probably need to sit down with somebody to put together...
Okay, so do you plan that?
Put together, yeah, put together, you know, an amended plan, bring it to us, you know, with all the items that we had discussed tonight to address all the, all the different points that were brought up. And we'll wait to see you at the next time, once it's on the agenda. Huh? Yeah, you need to present a full application.
Yeah.
So this was just a, yeah, so this was just a conceptual review tonight. Basically it was just to get the feeling of the board, you know, to find out, you know, and to ask, you know, ask any questions. You know, now it'll be...
I don't, and I don't know if we'll go...
Do they need a whole set of plans or can they just put the changes?
I can push out, I'll put it in 98.
Can't they just list the fence on that one? Rather get a new set of plans? Has anything changed? Well, the site is the same.
Yeah, the site's pretty much the, yeah, the site's pretty much the same. I mean, pretty much going to have the same conditions.
Unfortunately, I was looking, I don't see anything in the code that allows them to...
Do you have the old?
Requirements of site.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think there's got to be a new plan.
A new plan?
Yeah, unfortunately, I just took a quick look. I don't see anything in the code that allows the board to waive the site plan requirements. And what it really would be is, the plan would really be a survey just showing what's existing, because they're not proposing with a fence. So it would really be just an updated survey. Unfortunately, I don't think Eric's working anymore.
Yeah, so you did it originally, yeah, I think he's...
Yeah, I think he's, did you guys buy from Verlani's?
Yep.
They've been there a long time. They've been there a long time.
What you'd want to include with your application would be a narrative and a good place to start with your narrative would be addressing the conditions of the special permit, which are under section 24070 of the town code. It's relatively brief, I think there's six or seven conditions, but, you know, just sort of answer, explaining what you're proposing to do and in that explanation, making sure that you address all of those, because that'll be one of the first things that we need to verify, right? Does this comply with conditions of the special permit? Yes, it does, because X, Y, and Z are addressed in this little blurb, right?
What does a special use permit usually cost? Just trying to get an idea, feel out if it's worth it to move forward with this or just wash the whole thing? You're not going to spend thousands, thousands of dollars for, you know...
No, no, I understand, yeah.
This permit, since this number shows it's going to be $1,000.
Okay.
A thousand?
A thousand dollars for the application, not like when you won't be, this is what our consultants have to review.
Right, Drew did say something about escrow is fine, yeah, I mean, escrow is not, that's fine.
I do suggest you probably get an engineer or somebody to do that.
To do the plan, yeah, I'm not capable of doing that.
I'm not, um, there are problems on the, it's going to start the money, the big money. I spent a fortune on this back in 98, and I'm not going to go through this again, if it's the case, I will do.
Yeah. No, I mean, we don't, but again, it's just, you know, it's the minimum that we're looking for, so we're not, and most of the issues that, you know, most of the issues that would be required on the plan are pretty much on this plan, so there is a starting point, so you're not starting from zero.
Okay.
So it's a matter of reaching out to somebody, asking them what it would cost, I guess, to, you know, what would it be to get a special, you know, to apply for a special use permit?
Okay.
You know, based upon, you know, you have some current conditions in front of you, you know, to work with.
Okay.
You may want to start with a call to Eric Gardell?
Yeah.
If he's not, I don't think he's still working, but he may have sold his files to somebody, which would at least, you know...
Save a lot of time and money, yeah.
I'll give him a call, I'll just inquire about it.
Yeah.
It's worth a conversation, seeing what this would cost, yeah.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, on our end, it would be relatively simple as far as review goes, but there is a minimum, right, application fee and our review, so...
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think too much will...
Once I get all that, I'll go come into the office and I guess set something up and we'll go back at it again then.
Yeah, so once you make it, so...
I will be in the office tomorrow, but you can reach out to Judy and adjudicate me this special use permit application.
Okay, you want to come in tomorrow?
Sure, yeah, I'll try, I don't know if I can make it tomorrow.
Or we're here all week.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we would, so we would await your next submission, you know, to go forward. So if you get in touch with somebody to put the plan together, you know, if that, you know, if they have questions or concerns, they can contact Judy or the, or Barbara if she's back. And, you know, we can kind of move forward from there and then we'll, the board will be awaiting a submission, a full submission to review and I think it's pretty well straightforward to us at least. I think we have a, I think we have a good idea of what you're looking to do here.
All right, man, so I'll start then, I'll give Gardell a call and see what he said, what he said, he moved his files over to somebody else and then we'll go from there.
Okay, all right.
Appreciate it, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Good evening.
Have a good night.
All right. Okay. Seeing that we're to the end of the agenda, is there anything else anybody wants to discuss this evening?
A suggestion that you may want to make part of your application, the requirement to use EAF mapper?
Yeah.
We've done that in several other municipalities, but we actually just say must use, because if they don't use it, we're just going to pull it up and look at it, so...
Yeah, or we'll ask them to submit it in the next submission. The short EAF is included on the town website as one of the potential forms.
Right.
And that's what a lot of people click on because, you know, it's a handful of pages instead of 14. And some of the applications are small enough that, you know, that makes more sense, but unless it's a type 2 action, you know, if it's unlisted or more, we're going to want to see the full EAF and they might as well start with it, so...
And you can do the, you can do the short EAF on the EAF mapper as well.
That's true, that's true, they have a, they have an old...
So there is an option for a short, a short form, okay.
Yeah, I think we just need to update the link on the town website.
Okay, all right, so maybe we should, you know, we should probably discuss that, I mean, I think there's, I know there's other things that need to be discussed too, which I know we have to get addressed going forward, but we could do that another day. So with that, at this point, does anybody else have anything else they want to discuss?
No.
No? Okay, so being done, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay. Motion's made, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, one favor?
Aye.
Okay.